That being said, with our agenda change, we'll move on to item business D1. Consider one or more of the following actions related to lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month: approve a proclamation proclaiming June 2019 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, and/or adopt a minute order directing staff to lower the city flag at City Hall and replace it with a rainbow flag during the month of June 2019. We get the matter before me here. And we'll take staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. And already want to make a change a little bit to the language in potential action number two. And speaking with staff, since the publication of this, they believe it's possible with an additional set of clips to actually put a flag directly beneath the city flag rather than replacing it entirely. We weren't sure at the time of publication whether this could be done at all, but in checking with staff, they've confirmed with an additional set of clips, we could place it under. So a more fair reading of this at this point would be to place a flag underneath the city flag as an option. On May 21st, during public comment, three speakers addressed the council requesting an item for June, and in a very short order, staff put together, given the time sensitive nature of the request, staff put together this presentation. The city has three flag poles in front of City Hall, and one of the requests is to display a rainbow flag on one of those poles at City Hall. And looking at the logistics of doing that, and the logistics and laws around flag poles, there are both official flag poles and ceremonial flag poles. None of the city's current policies or protocols addresses specifically the flags at City Hall, so we're left to rely on both federal and state laws that relates to the display of flags at government buildings. Fortunately, in our case, because we have three poles, two of them are official poles, the American flag and the California state flag. The third pole is largely a ceremonial pole, and it currently displays one with the city logo on it. And I say fortunate because we need not consider federal state law and whatever flags are flown on that third pole. So it is 100% up to the discretion of the council to display whatever flags they would like on that third pole. Because we don't have a policy relating to the display of flags, that's why this matter is being brought forward to the council. Staff was not comfortable on its own granting a request to fly a particular flag other than what is up there, because we don't believe we would have the authority to take down a flag from the ceremonial pole and fly a different one. The, in addition, there is a request for a proclamation for June 2019. And we are bringing these items together, again, without guidance in our governance protocol about what is an appropriate item to bring forward for proclamations. In general, historically, proclamations and presentations have been for items that are not controversial in nature. A couple of recent examples include the celebration of Municipal Clerks Week and Mental Health Awareness Month. These are proclamations that don't engender any foreseeable controversy, and staff brings them as routine matters, and the council does not vote on them. They just present them at the appropriate time in the agenda. The proclamation of Pride Month for June is reasonably foreseeable to generate controversy, and so rather than just bringing that as a proclamation, we wanted to engage the council with that as well. Part of what makes some of these recommendations challenging is not having a basis to go off of an existing policy or protocols in our handbook. Certainly something I would recommend that we do in the future is to develop policies and protocols so that we would be able to handle requests like this. Also, wanted to highlight, as we do in the staff report, a number of the measures the city has already taken related to inclusiveness and embracing the diversity that exists in American Canyon. Notable efforts began in 2013 with the "We Love American Canyon," "We Love Everyone in American Canyon" campaign, and displays of those signs were prominent in neighborhoods in City Hall, and they're shown on page 327 of the packet. As part of our 25th anniversary in 2017, additional signage and additional campaigns were developed. "You Are Welcome Here" is another example of one of those, really embracing all groups that want to be included as part of American Canyon. And it's partially based on the efforts that have already been undertaken by the city and with the concurrence of the city council, and also with the fact that we don't have policies or protocols around new efforts of potential controversy, that staff is bringing back these items to council. Staff believes that without a policy basis to establish which things the council may choose to proceed forward, staff was not comfortable making recommendations on the proclamation or the flying of the rainbow flag. But certainly, the council can choose to do those options, and we've included both a draft proclamation and the process for displaying the rainbow flag should the council choose to do that. If there are any other questions, be happy to answer them.
Yes. Let me start with, certainly, we need to develop a policy and protocol, obviously. But let me speak to the matter itself. For the better part of last year, I worked with a committee with Napa County Health and Human Services Department, developed a conversation around staff and community of marginalized communities. The framework was diversity, equity, and inclusion. Representatives on the committee were from certainly very diverse with respect to ethnicity, to faith, and to gender identity. It's a matter very important to us as a city. I will take us back to the "We Heart" signs. We used to have them on the windows in here. Can we have them back, please? I think may have been the only one here. I don't remember if Councilmember Leary was involved with that?
Yeah, I was there.
Where you were there, okay. When that came about, just to refresh your course. A mixed-race family in American Canyon, Filipino white, received a very horrible hate mail addressing them and their family. We were never able to identify the perpetrator of that. So our response was to create these signs, like we have in our, we reissued them two years ago on Valentine's Day. That's why it has a big heart. But it was expression of who we are, who are our values in American Canyon. And the "We Heart," everyone in American Canyon speaks to everybody with respect to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Well, "You Are Welcome Here" is another statement to that effect for the city. I feel it is entirely appropriate and the right thing to recognize our LGBTQ community as well. As a father of a gay child, this is important to me. And as you can hear, my voice is very emotional. My daughter and her wife have a very loving family. The parents are the parents of my grandson. I know from my daughter's growing up, challenges she faced, the families that rejected her because of her gender identity, her sexuality. It was hard. Somewhere between junior high and middle school and high school, she came out to us as a family at dinner, obviously very concerned, not knowing what our response would say. And I told her, "You're my daughter. I will always love you." Give me a minute. I think we need to proceed with this, with the proclamation, with the flying of a flag as a statement of who we are as a city. That's my personal view. That's the values that I hold. I think it's values I think a lot of people in American Canyon hold near to them. To the point, is it controversial? Yes, it could be. For some, it will be. And there are other communities who will oppose this action. Respect to other communities, you know, we did do a proclamation recognizing contribution of the Muslim community in American Canyon. We have a large Muslim community. We just had a great celebration over the weekend, Middle Eastern night. And thank you Vice Mayor for putting that together. And thank you Councilmember Joseph for supporting that. Lot of us attended, and it was a celebration of diversity and faith, and the values that are important, and the commonalities we share in our faith communities. I don't know that American Canyon shies away from controversial issues of this matter when it speaks to families and community members. We may hold our own private opinions about this, and we will go forward with a statement about who we are. Everyone in American Canyon deserves to be here, to be treated with respect, and to recognize their contributions to the community, because we are all one community. Thank you. I'll take the next. Any other speaker on this? I'm looking for a light. Councilmember Leary.
You know, I grew up and couldn't sit at a lunch counter. Sat at the top of a theater. Never knew my grandfather on my dad's side, because he was killed in Georgia just for being black in the 20s. I started researching some things on suicide rates. For LGBTQ, it's about, they're at 30% of the entire numbers of suicide deaths for people in the United States. Suicide is the 10th cause of death in the U.S., and the leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 14. In 2017, 47,173 Americans died by suicide. Rates among whites was 15.85%, American Indian and Alaskan natives 13.42%, Black African American 6.61%, Asian 6.59%. Veterans commit suicide of a number of 20 every day. Youth grades 9 to 12 attempt suicide. For females, which is twice the number of white males, is 9.3%. For blacks, it's 9.8%. These are young people, 9 to 12. Blacks attempt, suicide attempts that require hospitalization at the age of, from 9 to 10, at 3.4% that they attempt and have to go to hospital. When I first thought about this, I thought about, what about, and I didn't say it this way, what about the haters? What about the haters who are going to come up and they want to fly their flags and fly their message and everything else? And I thought about it some more, and I said, "Well, damn the haters. If we show and push the love and keep talking about the love and the care that we have for each other, maybe one day the love will outshine the hate." So I can support this.
Anybody else want to, Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have public comment on the issue, if council is agreeable before we support.
Oh, well, I, well, yeah, I mean, then you can say what you want right now.
Yeah. Anybody else want to speak before we open, if you're ready to open up public comment, we will do that now. Yeah. Councilmember Joseph?
Sure. Public comment would be good.
I have public comment, and I have a very large number of people requesting to speak on it, which is personally, I feel is a very good thing. Yeah. Who did that one already? Liz Marks? Go here, podium, please. Three minutes, please. Please address.
No, I can talk forever.
I should say that, yes. The public comment on this matter is limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the city council.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Liz Marks. I'm from Napa, and I am the Development Director for Mentis Center for Mental Health Services. You'll be happy to know, Councilmember Leary, that we have therapists in the schools as you speak, providing mental health services right now, and we want to expand that. When I first moved to Napa County and started my first job working with nonprofits, I was introduced to American Canyon. I had a personal tour of the city from Fran Lemos, in her car, in her famous car, as welcome into Leon and Eva's home to taste Eva's famous lumpia. I helped secure funding from the Gasser Foundation to start the Family Resource Center, and worked tirelessly to pass Measure H to build a new high school. I'm saying all this because I'm not just a napkin coming down here telling you what to do. I came down and hopefully helped you guys. I was always very impressed with everyone here, and I mean that sincerely. The community was so welcoming, and diversity here was so refreshing and wonderful. I was also impressed that American Canyon could get things done. Leon and I had an inside joke. Did they build a pool? Remember that, Leon? Because we were all referring to all the other cities in Napa County that couldn't agree on anything and didn't have a community pool. You, of course, already built a pool and had a beautiful community rec center. My husband and I have two adult children who are both gay. One of our children has been called a fag in Napa, threatened with violence, and wonders where in Napa County it would be safe to go or hang out. I don't want to see another young person suffer and worry about their own safety. "The flag is a symbol of who you are as a city," as Leon so eloquently said, "and this kind of behavior is not acceptable." I am asking you to vote yes to raise the rainbow flag in American Canyon, because the rainbow flag is a symbol of tolerance, compassion, and hope for everyone, and it says, "Everyone is welcome here." Thank you.
Next speaker, Speaker Jason Kishinev.
Hey, it seems like just a few minutes ago, I was up here.
Yes.
I'm Jason Kishinev, congressional candidate in District 5 and a progressive Democrat. I want to thank you for having this conversation. A number of really strong activists have brought this conversation to Napa, the city, the county, and the school board, to St. Helena. Tonight, it's here. Tonight, they're also having this discussion in Yountville. I strongly support our city flying the rainbow flag, and even the transgender flag. Traveling around this county with these folks, I've heard stories about feeling isolated, lonely, insulted, and even physically attacked. I've learned that 44% of LGBTQ teens consider suicide, and if flying a flag lets these folks feel accepted and okay, then fly the damn flag. I saw a bit of the staff report earlier, which seems to be concerned about bigotry. Last time I checked, most of us do not want a society that is dictated by bigotry. The rainbow flag is one of inclusion. It is a positive symbol which says, "We include people in the LGBT community." In contrast, a Confederate flag, or a Nazi flag, at least to most of us, are flags of exclusion. These flags say, "Only whites," to most of us. I understand they don't necessarily mean that to everyone, but that's how most of us see them. I urge you to make the right decision, and make this simple and easy gesture to show that our city government stands with all of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Probably maybe I need to have a queue formed up here. Jenny Olson is next, followed by Julia Allen. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Garcia, and council members for hearing us tonight. My name is Jenny Olson, and I am the Executive Director of Teens Connect, a nonprofit in Napa that supports mental health and wellness of our teens in Napa County. We work down here at American Canyon Middle School and American Canyon High School. I'm here today to speak as an ally on behalf of our youth, specifically our LGBTQ youth, and ask that city council consider a request to fly the rainbow flag during June. As Jason mentioned, and this is according to the most recent California Healthy Kids survey from last year, 44% of our LGBTQ students in Napa Valley Unified School District considered suicide this past year, 44%, compared to 13.5% of our straight heterosexual students, which is not okay either, but 44% is nearly three, more than three times as much. Their survey also shows there is an increased rate of alcohol and drug use among our LGBTQ high school students. 38% are actively using drugs and alcohol versus 18% of our heterosexual students. These numbers are staggering, and while there are many social determinants at play here, this information makes me wonder if our LGBTQ students feel like they might not belong. Through my work with Teens Connect, I see firsthand the issues that are plaguing our youth. Over the past two years, I've heard from approximately 1,500 middle and high schoolers about specific issues they're struggling with. So many share that they are struggling from debilitating anxiety, depression, suicide ideation, and social exclusion, sorry. Many are bullied and feel they don't belong. Many engage in unhealthy behaviors as coping mechanisms. Together with our school district, the county, our hospitals, and our amazing nonprofits in Napa County, we are working hard to support the mental health and well-being of our students by adding new programs and initiatives every year. Most importantly, we are engaging our youth in this work. They are breaking the stigma around mental health and opening the conversation among their peers about what it means to be inclusive and accepting. We adults must do better for our young people. We must lead the way to a more accepting and inclusive community for our children. Flying the rainbow flag symbolizes acceptance and inclusiveness, as well as gives a message that our LGBTQ youth are not alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Julia Allen, next. That will be, you'll be followed by Juan Cisneros.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Julia Allen, and I live in Napa County, the city of Napa. I'm here as an ally for the LGBTQ community, as a mother of a seventh grader, and as an entrepreneur, creative director of Folia Design, and as a suicide survivor. Today's the eighth anniversary of my twin brother committing suicide. What I want to say is, it's been like eight years now, I was the designer for the city of American Canyon's logo. And what was profound to me, it was a nine-month-long project where the city invited the entire community, a very inclusive, diverse community, to come out, and hundreds of people came. I was blown away. I also designed the city of Napa's logo, and recently, the chamber, the new welcome American Canyon logo. I'm very well aware of the "We Heart" logo, which speaks of inclusivity here in American Canyon, but what I also want to say is, it's very apparent that symbolism is a huge important priority here, and how you emblazon those symbols next to the American flag and the California flag is massively important. When it trickles down to our youth, my seventh grader, he has friends that are coming out, LGBTQ kids. They are very socially active on Instagram, Facebook, and other social media outlets. They are plugging away, trying to connect with their peer groups, but, oh my gosh, what would it say to them if they drive by and see their city displaying support, not just inclusivity, I think the "We Heart" logo does that already, but when you actually put up a rainbow flag that specifically calls them out, saying, "We love you," it would be a huge form of recognition for them, and provide safety, and at least for them to have a sense of community here. So I stand here in all of those capacities, from a designer, from a mom, from an ally, and a suicide survivor, asking for support in showing the rainbow flag. Thank you.
Juan Cisneros, be followed by Joan Bennett.
Good evening, council members. I was one of the three that two weeks ago asked that you please add this to the agenda, and you did. So first and foremost, thank you so much for that.
Very short notice.
What's that?
Very short notice.
Yeah. Two weeks ago, I was here standing, representing my transgender friend, who I mentioned was nearly stabbed to death about six months ago. And while, again, we haven't been able to prove that it was a hate crime, I think we all know that the type of violence that she had to endure can be nothing but hate. And today, I want to stand here more as Juan Cisneros, both an immigrant, but also a member of the LGBTQ community, because I truly feel that being an immigrant and also being gay, I don't think there's any more or less controversial in being part of either one. And so if you could support minorities, if you could support Filipinos, or Muslims, or Latino Americans, you can certainly extend your arm out and support gays, because, or members of the LGBTQ community, because we've all are part of these marginalized communities that, without support from our leaders and other members of the community, will continue to stay marginalized. And I think it's time for us to change that term. Controversial, I think, is an old way of looking at it. I prefer to say, we embrace all communities, which is what the logo that you initially, I think you said, used to be here, but is no longer there. So I don't want, you know, our stance to get lost on where we stand with LGBTQ community. So raising the flag is a symbolic gesture, and I hope that it's one that can continue every year during the month of June in honor of Pride Month. So, thank you, guys.
Joan Bennett, followed by Gianthony Phillips.
Good evening, council. Am I on the right one?
Yes.
It occurs to me that we're often only appreciative, or most often appreciative, of those who are like us, our tribe, so to speak. They might be our religions, our political affiliations, our ethnicities. They might have the same pigment of skin color as we do. We also are comfortable with people in our economic status. We're comfortable with people who are like us, and that should also include our sexual What is of great importance, I think, to the well-being of the residents of our city and the city itself, is to have acceptance and appreciation for those who are different from us, if we can think of it that way. I'm uplifted by the diversity of our community, because I think it has always been our great strength here, and I think we should really value that. So tonight, I ask you to approve a proclamation for this LGBTQ people. And I would like to see you fly the flag. So the other thing I'd like to say, and I really, I'm so proud of this, is that LGBTQ folks are in our families, they're our neighbors, they're our community leaders, and they're in our government. And they have contributed. And they have contributed so much to our cherished way of life here in American Canyon. So I ask you to join the other cities in Napa County celebrating June as Gay Pride Month and fly the flag with honor. Thank you.
Thank you. G. Anthony Phillips, followed by Sandy Sutter.
Good evening. I'm G. Anthony Phillips. I'm from Victoria Fair, and a thirty-year resident of American Canyon. When I came here, one of the things that I was able to do was to pass the little petitions around to get the signatures for American Canyon to become a city. And in those days, it was not quite as diverse as it is right now, and several times I was told, "Go back to Vallejo." To me, the rainbow flag takes us completely away from that. It's originally called the Gay Pride Flag, and its symbols became most widely recognized since nineteen seventy-nine and is now represents the LGBTQ movement. One of the things that the flag originally created was with eight colors, but pink and turquoise were removed for production purposes, they could not get the materials. And since nineteen seventy-nine, it has consisted of six colored stripes. It is most commonly flown with the red stripe on top, as the colors appear in the natural rainbow. Aside from the obvious symbolism of a mixed LGBT community, the colors were determined to symbolize life, the red flag, the red stripe, healing, the orange, sunlight, the yellow, nature, the green, harmony, peace, blue, and spirit, purple or violet. June twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, the Supreme Court legalized same-sex marriage nationwide. The White House celebrated the ruling by illuminating its facade in rainbow colors, as did New York's Empire State Building, San Francisco City Hall, Walt Disney's World Cinderella Castle, the tower atop of One World Trade Center, New York City, the Thirty-Five W Bridge, Minneapolis, the Federal Courthouse in St. Louis, the Long Center for Performing Arts in Austin, Texas, Niagara Falls, the Capitol Building in San Juan, Puerto Rico, Seattle, the Great Wheel, Denver City and County Building, Playhouse Square, Cleveland, Capitol Building in Sacramento, San Francisco Grace Cathedral, and currently, Napa City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Sutter, followed by Nancy Matson.
Well, thank you. And Leon, coming out of the closet is difficult for all of us. Coming out as a parent, I know, is a difficult thing to do as well. But it's a statement by you about your love for your family, and thank you for doing that tonight. We support you, we love you. You might not have gotten as many hugs as you think, but there's a bunch of virtual ones in this room.
Thank you.
You've heard a lot of negative statistics tonight about some of the impacts that LGBTQ people live with, especially our youth, and we do have some research that was done by Cal State University, San Francisco. And what they found was that students who have support, students who have the loving embrace of the people around them, perform better. Those negative statistics, it starts to decline. The eight times more likely that a gay child will commit suicide than a straight cut child, those numbers start to come down. For us to fly the rainbow flag, for our community to stand up and say to everyone who lives here, in particular, our vulnerable youth, is saying to everyone, "We love you, we want you here, we accept you, we embrace you." It does not say, "We tolerate you," because no one wants to be tolerated. We want to be loved and embraced. And that's what American Canyon has to offer more than anything else. We are a community of heart and soul. Imagine that first time you had that dream of kissing someone. Maybe you were eight, ten, eleven, and you wake up the next morning and you have that little tingly feeling, and then you hear on the news how horrible you are for wanting to kiss someone of your own gender. Or you go to church that Sunday and hear that there's something so horrible about you that God hates you and you're doing some damage to your community because you had that dream. And that's what our gay youth live with. And that's why it's so important that we fly the flag, that we say to our kids, "We adore you," that we give them hugs, and we tell them how wonderful they are, because the parents who begat them probably are not gay and probably don't understand this about them. And so it's a little bit harder, and they need all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Matson, followed by Megan Dameron.
Nancy Matson, Goldfinch Drive. When I heard this is on the agenda, I thought, wait, don't we just have this proclamation every year? I know we haven't flown the flag, but don't we just do this every year? And so I had to get my head around it, that is this the first year we're doing this? Okay, anyway. So yes, we need this proclamation. We need to just support gay pride. It's just so incredibly important, and we need to fly the flag. When I would drive up the hill to the lab when I was working, I'm retired, I'd see that flag right at the entrance, and there's, you know, the National Lab thing, and then there's all the US and state and whatever, I don't know how many flags they had there. But seeing that pride flag just hanging there was really important. And over time, the lab community was more open and more inclusive, and I think the same thing every other speaker has said, having the flag hanging in town just encourages and supports all the LGBTQ people and their families and friends, and it's just really critical. So thank you for considering it, and I think it's great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Megan Dameron, followed by Nicole Reddicks.
Thank you, council. I'm Megan Dameron. I'm a resident here for ten years, and I also speak on behalf of the group Progressive Women of Napa Valley, and we very strongly support the idea to fly the rainbow flag for the month of June. And as you may know, Napa City Council recently approved this, and the request was made on May seventh, and it only took them two weeks to approve of that, and I would like for us to beat that, if possible. And I find that especially remarkable since, as a city, you know, we are really regarded as one of the most progressive cities in Napa County, and this is such a strong symbol that embodies that. It just feels like it's the right move, it certainly makes sense. And I was a bit surprised when I read the staff recommendation. It was surprisingly conservative, and there were a couple points made that I wanted to speak to specifically. So, you know, one concern was that there could be potential groups in the future whose values don't align with the cities, with our embracing of diversity, and I really don't want to see that be a barrier here. Instead of making this more complex, it's very reasonable that we could have some guidelines, you know, as a very maybe simplified solution. Could our city manager have the power to deny requests that aren't in alignment with our own values? The other concern is that there may be also folks that are offended, or as Mr. Leary so eloquently called, "The haters." You know, I feel that's a slippery slope if we worry about who we're going to offend. Does that mean that we can't have our Christmas tree lighting ceremony? What about our Easter egg hunt? These are city-sponsored events, and certainly, if we're worried about who we may offend, are we talking now non-Christians? What other events would we not be able to host? So wanting to continue to embrace diversity, certainly not the path we want to go down. As I mentioned, the city of Napa has done it. If you're on Facebook, I encourage you to go to the Napa Valley Unified School District page today. They posted a very eloquent message supporting the LGBTQ community. It's really kind of a beautiful gesture. I like where we're headed, and I encourage you to let American Canyon also embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Reddicks, followed by Greg Leibgold.
Good evening. I want to start this by saying, my response coming tonight was triggered, I'm a therapist, it was triggered a little bit by the staff recommendation to possibly even move this off the calendar, and so it might sound a little on the harsh side. I think I'm not addressing who really might need to be addressed by this, but I will take this moment to speak it into the atmosphere, anyway. So proclaiming June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month will not commemorate the values of one subset of the community based on their sexual orientation. Sexual orientation exists on a spectrum as a facet of being human. Values dictate, or rather, should dictate, how we treat others. Furthermore, the LGBTQ community is not narrowly defined by sexual orientation. For example, knowing that someone is transgender tells you nothing about their sexual orientation. However, the way a cisgender person reacts to that knowledge says everything about his or her values. If you deliberately choose not to stand with the rest of Napa County and the state of California, you would be loudly transmitting the message to the subset of our youth that are at the greatest documented risk of self-harm, that they do not really belong in our community. It would send the message to those youth and to the subset of adults who live and work in American Canyon, that the city didn't really mean it when the council unanimously adopted Resolution twenty thirteen oh five, affirming appreciation for American Canyon's rich, religious, and racial diversity, with the footnote that an appreciation of diversity is not just limited to culture and religion, but also to age, sexual orientation, familial and socioeconomic status, gender, political beliefs, religion, and more. It would send the message to LGBTQ people and their allies of all ages that Resolution twenty thirteen eleven, which purportedly embraces and celebrates all community members, is a farce. And it would communicate to LGBTQ visitors that We Heart Everyone in American Canyon signs are in fact false advertising and missing the words, the word "almost." If we believe that particular groups should not be commemorated because doing so may offend the culture, religion, and our political beliefs of other community members who not share these values, we would not have proclaimed August twenty eighteen to be Muslim Awareness, Appreciation, and Awareness Month. Sadly, one needs only open the newspaper to see the violent acts committed against those people. And I commend you for making that proclamation. By doing this today, by flying the flag, I don't get to cry at work, I'm a therapist, by doing this today, you're boldly stating, "You're here, we see you, and you matter." I urge you to do no less for the youth of this community who are struggling to find a sense of belonging, very often within their own families, the very people who should most love and accept them. To those of you here today, regardless of what decision is made, please hear me say now, you are here, I see you, and I refuse to quietly stand by and allow you to be erased. Thank you.
Greg Leibgold, followed by Esperanza Padilla.
Hello, Mayor Garcia. Great to see you and everybody else. My name is Greg Leibgold. I have been living in American Canyon for nine years with my husband, Eddie Chong. I'm very proud to live here. There's two points I just wanted to say, that when I was growing up, I'm fifty-five now, there wasn't a lot for me to see in terms of positive images of gay and who I am. When I was five years old, I even told my mom, it's like, I brought home my friend Max. I said, "Max, I love Max, I want to marry Max." And she's like, "No, you don't, boys don't marry boys." And I'm like, "Why not? I love him." It never made any sense to me. I've always been born this way, this is who I am. But I didn't have a lot of positivity, so it was very difficult for me, and it was very difficult for my brother, who I believe also was gay, and he took his life when I was only thirteen years old. This is Walnut Creek, there wasn't a lot. Now, American Canyon, maybe it's close to San Francisco, maybe it's only like thirty-five minutes away, but it could be like states away because it's very different. It's so important that we show exposure. If we had that flag out there, you're telling the youth that are struggling like I was that it's okay, that there's hope, that there's something out there, that there's people, that there's community. It's very, very, very important. It made me so happy to see in Napa the other day, the flag raised, that just made my heart sore. I cannot believe that American Canyon wouldn't be the only one. We have to be flying the flag with everybody else in Napa County. The other point I did want to talk about, what Nicole was talking about, I was, I read the staff recommendation, and it really hurt me to my core. I was very surprised to read in my city that somebody believed that you can't, you shouldn't commemorate something because it might be offensive to some other groups. That, that hurt me to my core, especially talking about values. When I think of me and my husband's values, we are loving, we believe in love thy neighbor, we believe in being kind to each other, we moved into our court and nobody was really talking to each other. So we went to every single place and we gave vegetables from our garden, we gave some goodies, we gave some cakes, and all of a sudden, everybody started talking to each other. Those are our values, that we're very spiritual, loving, kind people. It hurt me to hear otherwise from somebody. But I'm going to think positive. I completely endorse both one and two. I would love to see the proclamation, I would love to see the flag raised. It would be an exciting, wonderful, historic day in American Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you. Esperanza Padilla.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Esperanza Padilla. Thank you for having me today. I really want to speak about the importance of proclaiming June nineteenth as LGBTQ Pride Month and to raise the rainbow flag. I'll speak of this through anecdotal way. I want you to imagine being a young person like myself and having to wake up each day and seeing on the news that the federal government's eroding policy for your employment, for your healthcare access, or even on the cusp of overturning same-sex marriage, and you have to live with that fear every day as you open your phone and scroll Facebook. Or even imagine being one of the many high school students at American Canyon High and having to hear whisperings from other students that say you're abnormal or don't really accept you just because who you are, because maybe you like someone the same gender as you, or maybe you feel like you're not the gender that you were assigned with at birth. Or even imagine an employee or a business owner or one of your neighbors, anyone in your family, as a matter of fact, could be a member of the LGBTQ community, and they need to know that they are included here. They need to walk out of their house, they need to go by City Hall and see that rainbow flag flying, they need to know that they're going to be accepted here for who they are. Of course, there's always the statistics that many people brought up, but I think it's important to emphasize that we are a community here, and proclaiming this month as Pride Month and raising that rainbow flag is not just an empty gesture, it's a statement, and it's a powerful statement. It says to our neighbors and to our friends and families that we accept you, we accept your identity, we accept you for who you are, and I think that is what we want to be in American Canyon. Speaking as an American Canyon resident, the reason that I like being here, the reason that I really enjoy being an American Canyon resident is because of our diversity. Yes, our diversity includes racial, ethnic, and religious background, but our diversity also encompasses other things, like who we love. I think if we really want to emphasize that statement, that we love everyone in American Canyon, then we need to proclaim this month as Pride Month, and we need to raise that rainbow flag, because I think that honors who we are as American Canyon residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to be here tonight.
That's all the cards I have on item D1. Anybody else wishing to address the council, please step forward to the podium. Again, for those who entered late, the room requests that you keep your comments to three minutes, address your comments to the city council.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks very much for giving us some extra time. I just got off a ferry from San Francisco where I've been working all day. And, oh, by the way, my name is Matt Pope, I lived in American Canyon for about 15 years. I was really looking forward to just going home at the end of tonight and relaxing, but then I read this staff recommendation online, and I got to tell you, man, I, I always took pride in American Canyon being the most diverse city in Napa County. We used to take a lot of pride in that. I've been on that side of the days before, I've rarely read something as cowardly and as cynical as this staff recommendation. What is going on with this? And I think I know the hearts of at least some of you up there, that you've got to see this as the same thing too. One of the things we forget sometimes is the pride celebration, and it is a celebration, but it started as a rebellion. It started as a group of people saying, "Enough! We are not going to have our humanity based on our sexual orientation, we're not going to have our humanity stripped out and have us classified as a, to read the report, subset, a subset denying our basic humanity." It was a pushing back. And there's a flag, another striped flag right behind you, that was also started by a group of people saying, "Enough! We're pushing back." And when that flag was founded, the idea was, these pretty lofty ideals were held up. And at the time, they said all men were created equal, because that's how they spoke back then. But I think we've interpreted as all of us are created equal. And when we fall short of that pledge, always in this country, groups have stood up to say, "Not good enough. Power seeds nothing without a demand." So that is not good enough to have our humanity stripped out based on us being a subset, based on this one aspect of our personality. This is a cynical recommendation, this is a cowardly recommendation, I urge all of you to reject it. I urge all of you to be, join the rest of Napa County to fly that flag, to do away with the persecution, the abuse, the violence, the targeting that, let's face it, is resurfacing now in our culture. We see it every day, as other speakers have referenced. This is not the time to relax, this is not the time to throttle back, this is not the time to be quote-unquote "conservative" in dealing with the human rights of our neighbors, and that's what we're talking about, nothing less. Human rights. I know the hearts of a lot of you up there, I can't imagine you're going to accept this cowardly and cynical recommendation. Sorry, I'm a little grouchy, but I'm going to go home now.
Next speaker.
Have notes on my phone. Hi, I go to American Canyon High School, I live in American Canyon, and I'm an LGBTQ...
Could you identify yourself by name for the...
Oh, my name is Ty Gudibaldi, Gudibaldi. And I'm an LGBTQ youth. So I, this week is finals week, very stressful, and I just turned in a project for my humanities class about my appearance doesn't define me. And I stated that my sexuality is not determined by my clothing, and it is something that I felt I had to state because of the lack of awareness that I experienced in my school. Before that, I attended a school blood drive. For, there was a lot of support in my community, in my school, but one of my teachers couldn't donate because he was a gay man. And then I went to one of my class picnics, and I really saw firsthand how there is still ignorance around LGBTQ youth in my school. And although there is a somewhat understanding and acceptance of LGBTQ youth in this generation, in my generation, there's not full acceptance. We just had to put out a, a, an announce, an announcement of not using gay slurs in school, because it's still being done. And I think that raising the LGBTQ flag in American Canyon will really show that across the board, it's just standard to accept everyone in your community, including LGBTQ lives. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. What, oh shoot, I'm trying to unlock my phone. Okay. Hi, my name's Judy Roscoe, and some things about, about me are, I live in American Canyon, I lived here for a lot of my life, kind of, like, I went here for high school and stuff. And I'm multiracial, and I also identify as part of the LGBTQ community. And, yeah, none of those things are things that I think should define who I am, but they're also things that are important to me. And, yeah. And going to school in AC, I always felt different, and it took me a while to realize why. I had friends in, at school I could talk to, and I had teachers and adults that I knew I could talk to about most things, but I never knew who to go to about my identity, and kind of struggling with figuring that out. And I didn't know there were like words for how I was feeling, I just thought I was weird or like different. And I never personally heard anything negative towards me, mostly because I was not out at all, I didn't talk about it at all. So I never heard anything negative towards me, but also hearing, I didn't hear anything about, about, yeah, about LGBTQ community, about anything like that. And I think that's just as bad. Yeah, and a lot of people have talked about like mental health and how that affects youth. And like, I know personally, from experience, that it has affected me a lot. And I think that there isn't one solution to like figuring out like how we're going to change these negative, like views people have about the LGBTQ community. And, yeah, but seeing like, seeing a flag, seeing the pride flag in AC would be an amazing start in the right direction. It's not the end of anything, but it's like the beginning. And, yeah, seeing it as risky or controversial or political, honestly, like, to me, makes it seem like you're not seeing them as, us as people, anyone as people. And yet, seeing it, seeing it in AC, the flag in AC would, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. But yeah, I forgot what I was going to say. Hi, bye.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor Garcia, council members. My name's Ian Stanley Posadas. I live in Napa, and I run an LGBTQ nonprofit that works throughout Napa County, including here in American Canyon. Firstly, Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Leary, I want to thank you for your personal words, they're actually surprisingly very touching. I'm not used to going to local government meetings where people are so personal about issues, even though they are issues that affect every single person that we're talking I don't have much to add because most of what I wanted to say was around things that people have already said, and I don't want to repeat that. People already spoke very fine about that. But I do want you to know that the statistics people are talking about are like here happening in American Canyon, and they're not statistics. My program at the high school and the middle school and at our office, we get calls from American Canyon people wanting to know if they're going to be okay. I had, we had a dad who was beating his child and said he'd rather go to jail for beating his kid than have a gay son. And the mom got connected to us through a friend at church who knew me through church. And growing up in a faith community, it can be extra isolating because you should be able to go to your faith community for support. And oftentimes, or sometimes I should say, I've actually gotten to know a lot of churches that are very affirming. But, but sometimes the church is a place you can't go also. So I'm really thankful that they found me through a church connection. My family's support as a Catholic, conservative, and very loving family that has found their way to understand and support LGBTQ has meant everything to me and my husband's happiness and to having a community that I can grow up healthy in. And I hope that you realize that showing the flag for American Canyon, even if it might be controversial, or some people might not understand it, that it's a big, bold stand for youth and families who are wanting to know if they're okay here. So, thank you. Please vote.
Any more public comment? If not, we'll continue with our matter before us this evening. Seeing done, we'll close public comment. We'll turn, one more. One more, okay.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tammy Wong, a resident of Wetlands Edge Road, and I just wanted to thank everyone for their lovely comments. You've all expressed everything so eloquently, and I don't, as you said, I don't feel I could say anything more to it. I just want to say that as a resident, I am in support of passing the proclamation and flying the flag, and I hope that when the council considers it, you'll, you know, you'll take into account the wishes that have been expressed here by your residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, briefly, please.
Hi, Nance Manson. Real quick, I noticed in the staff report it mentioned if you decided to get a flag and fly it, it might take a week or two to procure that flag. And I would like to volunteer, if you decide yes, I'm sure we can drive to San Francisco and buy that flag in one day and get it up. Is it in your car? Okay, good, thank you.
To that, hold a thought, we'll see where we end up. Okay, public comment is closed, we'll take up the matter before us this evening. With that, we have, well, we have a proclamation...
This is a council deliberation, Mr. Mayor. Council comment.
Yes, that's what we're taking up here. We have the proclamation issue, and we have the flag issue before us. Council would like to take up the issue of the proclamation, any comment on that? Questions?
No.
Comment on the subject as a whole?
Yeah.
Well, I would think probably we'd want to take them up separately.
Well, continuing the conversation from before public comment.
I want to continue the discussion.
Yes, that's right.
But not...
But not separately.
Yeah. I think it's, I think they're one issue.
You think they're one issue? I can live with that too. Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, well, I appreciate, yeah, no, I can't talk. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I would agree, especially with former Councilmember Joan Bennett's remarks, that diversity has been the strength of American Canyon, and that diversity extends beyond sexual orientation, culture, ethnicity, religious, it's political diversity, that's, it's a strength. And everything we can do to support that and reinforce that makes sense. It's good policy from my perspective. So I have no problem with either proposal. To be honest with you, tonight's agenda item for me was the discussion about the development agreement relating to Watson Ranch. And quite honestly, I devoted all of my energies to looking at that. I don't want to sound dismissive, but I didn't look at the staff report because frankly, I thought it was a no-brainer, we'd recommend approval, and that would be that. So to be honest with you, I'm a little taken aback at the recommendation, but for me, like I said, it would have been a no-brainer, let's go with the flag and the proclamation. And I agree with Nance Manson, I kind of thought we did these proclamations too. If we hadn't, you know, I'm surprised and somewhat ashamed, but certainly we should be doing it on an annual basis.
And we generally, the proclamations are generated from those organizations external to city council, and cities come forward with it. We do them manually that way. Certainly, we can, as a policy with council, identify this as one that we want to do annually. With that, Vice Mayor Abadamos.
First, I wanted to thank everybody for their courage and for being here today. I have so much that I want to say, but everybody else was limited to three minutes, so I'm not going to take half an hour. If you look at American Canyon's demographics, it's a town of minorities. Minority doesn't just mean that you're brown, it just, it means that you're part of a group that's not the majority group, whatever it may be. And the fact, and that's what makes up the diversity that we're all so proud of. I think that's been touched on plenty tonight. However, I've been in American Canyon since I was two years old, and I've felt what you guys are all speaking about personally. Ian, if you remember, a couple of years ago when that Florida attack happened, I was invited to come speak at your nonprofit. There was, you guys opened your doors to everyone to come talk about kind of the shock of the attack. And I was invited as the Muslim, the token Muslim of the community. And when I spoke, I said to you that I'm here because I'm Muslim, and my community is the first one to get blamed anytime there's a kind of attack. And I'm not that kind of a person, most Muslims are not. Mayor Garcia talked about my Middle Eastern cultural event that happened this weekend. It was so close to not happening, but because of support from my community members, Nance and Sandy, Councilmember Mark Joseph, I was able to make it happen. When I was a student at Napa Junction, so most of you know about Ramadan. I always leave at 8:00 PM during Ramadan because I have to go break fast, and the majority doesn't fast during Ramadan, so the council meeting continues without me. And it's a little bit frustrating, it's, you guys can hear like how shaky my voice is, because I'm so passionate about this and I've been so frustrated by it. I leave at 8:00 PM, so I break my fast, the meeting continues without me, some people see me walk off on TV, have no idea why, it's not something you said, I promise. And so today is actually our holiday, the last day of Ramadan was yesterday, and I'm here. Nobody would be here on Christmas. When I, so I've been in American Canyon since I was two. When I was a student at Napa Junction, I started fasting at the age of eight years old. I was forced to sit at the picnic tables with the other kids during lunch while being mimicked and made fun of. I was always told, "Ha ha, I'm eating, do you want some? You can't have any." And nobody understood why I was fasting, because we were just kids. But the grownups did, and they still forced me to sit at the lunch tables, and that's still happening today. I've had members of our community come tell me that, that's not okay. Although I think our signage is great, I don't think it's enough, I don't think it makes me feel included. I've seen the "I heart everyone in American Canyon" signs, in fact, I was told that the "I heart everyone in American Canyon" signs takes care of that, and it doesn't take care of that. It doesn't. I'm telling you, I've seen it, I've felt it firsthand, it does not take care of promoting inclusivity in our city. The January 2013 proclamation affirming appreciation for American Canyon's rich, religious, and racial diversity is great in writing, but we don't practice that. I know we have a Christmas tree lighting, I know we have an Easter egg hunt sponsored, hosted by the city, we have an Easter dinner. The Festival of Lights, the Holy Festival of Lights, is not hosted by us. My Middle Eastern event is not hosted by us. That's not fair, and I don't think that's how it should continue. And I think now is the time for the city to assess if we're going to include everyone or no one at all. I stand behind this, thank you guys for being here, thank you for your bravery and your courage.
Councilmember Oral?
Yeah, one of the speakers, Nance Manson, my friend Nance Manson came up on stage and said, "Have we not done this before?" And what, in March, or is it February, Ian Stanley Posadas, where is he? He wrote me an email, he's way back there filming me. He wrote me an email saying, you know, about all ideas that they had for LGBTQ throughout the year in Napa and Sonoma Counties, just promoting the events, and was asking me to come out. And I said, you know, I couldn't really make an event, but I wrote him back, I said, "I don't believe we've ever had a proclamation about LGBTQ month in our city. I suggest you explore that for the month of June." And Ian, I'm thinking you followed up on that because this is, it's kind of rained down on the county. And I'd like to think I have a little bit of, a little bit of a spark here, because I'd moved from San Francisco before I came to American Canyon. I don't know, San Francisco's kind of big on pride, if anybody's noticed that before. And it was pretty quiet here, and I just kind of went along my way, just thinking that, you know, whatever, you know. you know, whatever, you know? And then, until I got this note, I didn't realize that it was never acknowledged before. And I appreciate what the city's staff, I mean, what the city has done to support diversity, inclusion, and the campaigns that we have done in the past. In the defense of the report, and this is where I pause a little bit, not in terms of not being an ally for the LGBT community or anything in that. And I, this sticker was given to me last week, two weeks ago, but what, I wanted to wear it today, because I knew it was coming up. But what I fear is, what is in the staff report, and however may be worded, if it sounded mean to others, I think it was more, I read it a little bit differently, it was protectionist. How do we fly our flag, plus the rainbow flag, with pride and reverence, while, and make that decision, but also keep out any flags that we don't necessarily want to fly because of speech or whatever? And that is what I think the argument is in the staff report. What is that policy? We don't have that policy. I would love to see that policy. Is it by decree and proclamation that it only happens? I want to be able to protect us from groups that hate from flying their flag. I want to protect us from groups that are just not aligned with the city's interests from flying the flag. But that said, in that words of caution, I am in favor of a proclamation for LGBTQ Month or Pride Month, as well as for flying that flag. Thank you.
Any other comment from council on the matter? To put it together in terms of a motion, I think it should address both the proclamation and the flying of the flag. My additional comment would be that we have to work on developing a policy for the city.
What I was gonna suggest, Mayor, procedurally, if the council wishes to proceed with the proclamation, it would be traditional to actually read the proclamation itself. So if the council wanted to adopt the proclamation, then the mayor could actually read the proclamation.
To do that tonight, then?
Yes, that's why it was included in the staff report, so that it could be done right now.
It'll be done tonight. Will you motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and have the mayor issue the LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation right now.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Aye.
Councilmember Leary.
Yes.
Councilmember Orow.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. So typically, those, we don't know who to re-issue this to this evening, but if those of you who would support this, want to gather behind the podium, I'll read the proclamation.
Including you, mister.
Probably something we'll retain as the city and keep it in our, post it in a prominent place in American Canyon, City Hall. Okay. City of American Canyon proclamation. LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2019. Whereas June is commemorated around the globe as International Gay Pride Month, to honor and celebrate the history, achievements, and contributions of the LGBT, LB, LGBTQ people, excuse me, I'm stumbling on my words here. Whereas the City of American Canyon celebrates the vast diversity of its citizens and visitors, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, and seeks to ensure a safe, healthy, inclusive place for all citizens, visitors, and their families. And whereas the City of American Canyon strives to be a community that offers equal opportunity to its citizens, all of whom deserve to live with dignity and respect, free from fear and violence, and protect against discrimination regardless of gender, gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, and intersex couple people, their families, friends, and allies come together in various celebrations of freedom and pride. And whereas California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBTQ citizens, and while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor, City of American Canyon, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2019 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, and invite everyone to reflect on the ways we can all advance the rights and protection of LGBTQ people and live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. We'll post it somewhere. We have one other matter to deal with, and that is the flag.
Flag?
Council, we'll take up that matter now. You need the other further conversation on the flag. I understand we may have one readily available, and it could be put on, the issue originally came up for me, I'd forgotten that we have a celebratory, the term is-
Ceremonial.
Ceremonial, flagpole, that flies the city flag. So I was wondering how we would be able to fly that on the American flag and the State of California flag. We do have the POW MIA flag, that took a while to get that to happen, but that flies over there at the Veterans Park, so that was allowed. But this one, as Mr. Hawley has described, only requires a discretion of City Council. We can make that decision tonight. Hopefully, we can. We can probably have the necessary clipping.
Yes, Mayor, procedurally, it would be simply a minute order from the City Council directing the city manager to fly the rainbow flag. As I mentioned earlier, we believe now that with an additional set of clips, we can fly it beneath the city flag, so we need not take it down. It would just fly beneath the city flag.
That would seem appropriate to me.
Yeah. And the next question is when? I'm assuming that the council is supportive of this, so the next question would be when?
If he's really got the flag tomorrow.
Right. So what I was gonna propose, I'm actually gonna be on vacation next week, and to avoid the appearance of my not being there at this flag raising, being constituted as some other reason, we'd like to do it Friday morning, and the time to get the flag, get the clips, and we would then, probably 8:30 or 9:00 Friday morning, we'll have to fire up those final details, but we'd like to do it Friday morning.
Send out public notice on that, so those who wish to attend can.
Correct.
Right, does that sound agreeable?
It does, but I do still want to make sure, give direction to staff to come back with a policy of how we will be exploring which flags to fly.
I would agree. I mean, we need to develop a policy in a more general sense, but in the immediate case, let's go forward.
Very good. I know this came on very short notice, as I mentioned before, but obviously, something that's the right thing to do for American Canyon. Okay, so there's a motion to the effect of getting the flag to fly on the ceremonial pole, underneath the American Canyon city flag.
I'll make that motion, and I just wanted to emphasize two points. One is, it's always encouraging if we can beat the city of Napa at something, so doing it in three days is just icing on the cake. And then, secondly, Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguiar Curry would also like to know that this is what we've done. She's, Tracy sent me a text saying that they're tracking these things, so I will let her know that right after this.
Yes, I received that text as well. I should have had it as part of the public comment on it, but-
So, my long way of going to it, I'll make that motion that we- Will we include developing a policy in that? Yes, that we direct the city manager to schedule raising the LGBTQ pride flag this Friday morning, and further direct him to develop a policy and bring it back for council consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. With regard to policy, I would encourage the LGBTQ community to be present for discussion and development of that as well. Public input is important on that. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Leary.
Yes.
Councilmember Orow.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Abudalmas.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you all. Okay, we'll take a brief recess here. Five minutes left?
Yeah.
Five minutes. We'll be back here at, let's see, 8:20.